Imina Trente, Shiatina Leheza, Tuan Guahan is back in session. Good afternoon, colleagues. We are resuming on the second reading, beginning with Bill number 62-37COR. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 62-37COR, an Act to amend subsection 12-104, 12-106, and 12-108B, and to repeal 12-107R and T., all of Chapter 12, Title 17 of the Guam Code annotated, relative to the process for charter school petitions. I move to place it in the third reading file and want to discuss.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I think I want to start decades back, in 1975, there was a bill signed into law which provided tax credits for tuition payments in private Catholic schools, and it was ruled unconstitutional. And this was a law that was proffered by Speaker Ada and addressed by former Governor Ricky Bernalio. And I think that that bill was ahead of its time, because if you fast forward to last year, the Supreme Court ruled that private religious schools are entitled to public funding. And so what Bill 62-37 does is amend the charter school law to allow for private religious schools to avail of the charter school process and to file charter school petitions, which is, you know, someone who goes to church every Sunday morning, I was very happy to hear about. And so, again, Bill 62-37 aligns our existing charter school law with the Supreme Court ruling, again, in allowing private religious schools to avail of public funding and charters. And it also mandates that the Charter School Council allow a new charter, a private school that specializes, of course, in religion and Chamor language, physical fitness, music, and the arts. And I think that would be a great complement to the existing array of charter schools as we have had. And you know, there's the history of charter schools, I have to admit that when we first allowed for charter schools, it was a rough start. And I know because I had been in the media and I covered, you know, a lot of the difficulties that one of the charter schools, the Guan Academy Charter School, had had with maintaining accreditation and just, you know, accountability and the use of taxpayer dollars. But I have to say, as the Chair of Education, charter schools and the charter school process has definitely come a long way to be more accountable. And I think that a big part of that is, you know, the Council is headed by a very astute and capable lady, Ms. Vangie. And so, fast forward to today, we've got some great charter schools that I think complement what the public school system and the Guam Department of Education has to offer. And, again, this bill received overwhelming support in the public hearing, not just from people in private religious schools, but also from several board members. The Guam Board of Education testified in favor of this measure. And I think that was because they realized that, obviously, faith is a big part of our island's fabric and culture and history, but more importantly, that not every child fits into kind of that cookie cutter education that is offered in the public school system. And, again, my heart's in the public school system. I'm a product of the public school system. I'm a proud George Washington Gecko. But in going to public school, I felt like things were lacking to keep me interested. And then looking at the, again, the array of the different charter schools that offer really an alternative for our people, from, you have the Guan Academy, which does direct instruction, you have Sciences Fun and Awesome, or CIFA, which is a STEM curriculum. And let me just expand a little bit on the STEM. And so STEM is offered in the public school system, but what charter like CIFA does, for example, is it allows a STEM, a full STEM curriculum. So if you have a student who's excelling in science, technology, engineering, or math, they might get just a little bit of that in a public school system. But if they enroll in a charter like CIFA, it becomes their entire curriculum. And I think that that's where I see the value in charter schools, is that you have, you know, some of our people might not want to go to college, might not be able to go to college, and so they might avail of a trade school, like the school down in Aggett, that's headed by the McManus family. Or, you know, you might have a student who is maybe adept at technology and the tablets and the iPads, and, you know, they would go over to iLearn. And so what I think we do by allowing for private religious charters, of course, we're aligning our existing charter school law with the Supreme Court ruling, but we're also allowing the availability of a private school education for our people at a public school cost for the students. And so that's basically what this bill is about, and in mandating the acceptance of a new charter, right? And, again, anybody can apply for a charter school. I've kind of laid out in the bill's language and the intent, the value of project-based learning. And it's a little bit of an intimidating term, but basically, project-based learning means, let me do it myself, let me figure it out, let me be involved with a project, let me put my hands on it. And you'll find that, you know, kids learn a lot easier, you know? When I was putting together some toys with my kids over the Christmas holiday, you know, there's that option, we could do it ourselves, but if you involve the kids and let them put their hands on the tools and let them put the things together, you'll find that they learn how to do projects kind of from all angles. And so, again, in adding a charter that not only has that basis in religion and faith, but also in our Chamor language, I think is very valuable, and adding that type of learning opportunity, again, to the existing array of charter schools. And so I would ask for the support of my colleagues on this measure. I know that if it's good enough for the Supreme Court, I think it's good enough for the people of Guam and the island of Guam. I did also have an amendment to proffer.
Please proceed.
And you could find it in the drive. It's a lengthy amendment, but just so you know, we only changed a couple of sections, nothing was taken out. And it's really based on kind of the timelines that would allow a private religious school to apply for the charter process. And so the amendment, again, is in the drive, and it's to amend subsection 12-106A, B, and F. of Chapter 12, Title 17 Guam Code annotated, to read. Subsection 12-106, process for approving or denying.
Senator, we're going to take them separately.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so A.
So A, the language that we added is down here, and you'll see it's underlined. The deadline to submit a petition to establish an existing accredited, non-converted private school into an academy charter school, or convert a private pre-kindergarten through at least eighth grade school into an academy charter school for the school year 2023-24 shall be July 15, 2023.
Did you want to speak on it, that amendment?
Basically, this allows for the existing accredited, non-converted private school to apply for the charter school process, and hopefully for the Charter Council to review the application and approve it if they decide to do that, and to allow them to enter the process and ask for funding for the upcoming fiscal year, ma'am.
All right. Is there anyone who wants to speak on that one amendment of subsection A, changing it from June to July 15? Senator Sinagastin on the amendment?
I'm in support of the bill, okay, for charter school. Let's start with that, so that we have that noted. You got it June to July. In two days, it's really July. There's a reason why they had a date, and the reason why I'm going to understand is that, or believe it is, is because of budget purposes. I think it's not an issue to find funding for this, because it's about the kids. That's the focus we've all, most of us here have all agreed on. But the question is, July 15, when the bill is finally passed, the July 15 is less than even two weeks? Let's just, we just picture that, today's the 28th, by the end of the week, when this bill is finally passed, it's less than 15 days? I don't know if the council's ready for it. And are we going to say, is the council's, why they didn't approve for charter school? No, it's because the date was changed versus June. And I honestly believe that if the charge, the council is here, I'm not asking for them to be here. And I've been trying to get hold of them right now, the chairwoman said, if they said they got a preliminary and they're good to go, let's do this, let's get this going. But if they don't even have the preliminary and they don't have the numbers, all I'm saying is that we're actually forcing the council to work overtime, and we need to understand how the council's set up. But otherwise, I mean, I have no objection to this, as long as everybody understands the mechanism that gets involved, not just assuming that it's a great thing to happen. It's a great thing to take care of our children, period. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment on subsection A, Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too, you know, absent even this amendment, I support the intent of the legislation. However, I have to agree with the previous speaker, the good gentleman from Gigo, in that while we moved, basically, the date for the deadline to submit the petition by one month, I have to agree, I mean, in a couple of days, it's July, and July 15, this is assuming a number of different factors, in that this really doesn't become law, if it becomes law, until next week. And, you know, and even if it, I mean, it doesn't get transmitted to the governor until next week. And then even the governor, in wanting to review it, may take it right past that deadline. And so it just may, just the process itself may basically determine that this is going to be moot. Now, I understand that, you know, we're just, this language here just talks about the deadline to submit a petition. Nothing stops them from submitting the petition prior to that. However, you want, I want to believe, and I want to assume, that, you know, there are different educational institutions that may want to see if they can avail themselves of this opportunity to become a charter school. And if you just think about the process timelines that we have, just facing this bill alone, where they may have not days, but hours to be able to submit it, and then it, deadline moves and comes, there goes that opportunity. I don't think that's going to be fair to them, nor is it fair to the system itself. So I'd like to be able to propose an amendment to this amendment in making the deadline July 15, 2024. Can I take a one-minute recess? I just got, I just got angry eyes from the author, and I just want to make sure that... Thank you.
We're back from recess. Senator Blas, you still have the floor.
See, I told you, he gave me bad eyes. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to be able to discuss this. I think we've been able to come to an agreement on this. I withdraw my amendment to the amendment to change the date to, the year to 2024, but I would then like to then, with this dispensive, my withdrawal of the amendment first.
Yes, this sponsor would like to withdraw his motion to amend. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. But all those thanks, I want to thank the author, as well as the gentle lady from Tuan Guahan for the discussion. And I would then like to move to make the, to amend, actually, still amend the amendment, to, instead of reading July of 2023, to read now September 1, 2023.
Is there any objection to having that done verbally, not in writing, notwithstanding the rules? Is there any objection? All right, so the motion is to amend the amendment. The amendment is to change June to July 15, 2023. This amendment would change June to September, it would change June?
It would change.
It would change July 15 to September 1. Is there any objection to that amendment, to the amendment? Senator Sinagastin on the amendment.
Just a short comment, because the original was June, can we just use the month, so it's any time in that month? You know, instead of going to a specific day in the month? That's just, that's a question I wanted to ask.
I'm just trying to follow, so that I don't get that involved by the good author from Gigo anymore.
Okay, then otherwise, September 1 is good for me. Thank you. I'm in support.
All right. On the amendment to the amendment, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on changing it to September 1, 2023? Anyone like to speak? If not, is there, would you like to close?
No.
Is there any objection to that amendment to the amendment? Seeing no objection, that amendment passes. So now reads, shall be September 1, 2023.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. On that subsection A, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? If not, I actually think that that disposes of the entire amendment. All right, just back on to Senator Barnett's original amendment. It's now been amended that the deadline shall be September 1, 2023. On that amendment, is there any objection? Seeing none, amendment passes. We're now on Senator Barnett. You have the floor again, if you want to continue making amendments.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will continue making the amendments. B, section B, it's amended to read after the word "council," and not later than 15 days for a petition to convert an existing school. The council shall hold a public hearing on the petition to gather the information that is necessary for the council to make the decision to approve or deny the petition. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, ma'am, and I would just, again, ask the support of my colleagues for this, a very simple amendment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator. On the, on subsection B, the amendment is to change 30 days to 15 days. Is there any objection, or Senator Blas on the amendment?
He's going to give me bad eyes again, because I object to this amendment. Madam Speaker, I mean, you know, what we want to be, is make sure we give them the opportunity to cross their Ts and to dot their Is. And really, when you only talk, when you, right now, we're in the midst of, everybody is in the midst of a disaster. in the midst of, everybody is in the midst of a disaster. Everybody's trying to get things back in order. We don't want this to be a rush, rush process. You know, I'd like for them to be able to be successful and giving them that extra time to be able to, you know, go over this. It really doesn't hurt to, to provide them because it says not later than. So if they can finish it in five days, it's finished in five days. Okay? If they can finish it in 15 days, they finish it in 15 days. Okay? But it's just, when you try to rush them into that, you know, especially given the current circumstances, situations that we have today, I would rather that we keep it at the 30 days as opposed to the 15. So I respectfully object to this amendment and want to keep it back at 30 days. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
All right. Anyone else on the amendment to subsection B, the Barnett amendment to subsection B, who would like to speak? Senator Augustine, did you want to speak on that one?
I was going to echo the same fan of the previous speakers that 15 days. Be mindful, folks, when the council gets the packet, they look at the packet, then they got to give a five-day notice, and then hopefully they'll get a date and do what they need to do. The 15 days may run out. The 30 days is within reason. There's no reason why. They probably would get it done in 14 days or maybe even 16. But to shorten it, we're demanding something of somebody that even ourselves, we have promised fulfilling. Thank you. I support the objection, and we stick to 30 days.
All right. On the Barnett amendment to subsection B, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? All right. If not, then Senator Barnett, you can close on your amendment to subsection B. There has been an objection.
May I call for a moment's recess?
One minute recess.
Thank you.
We're back from recess. Senator Barnett, you had the floor, closing on your amendment to subsection B.
Yes, ma'am. I move to respectfully withdraw my amendments to sections B and F.
All right. Well, B is withdrawn. All right. We're now on, you haven't proposed any other amendment yet. Do you want to propose any more amendments?
No, I want to propose withdrawing my amendment to subsection F, too.
All right. So it's not on the record yet?
Oh, okay.
So no need. All right. So we're back.
Thank you.
That's your opening on the bill. Would you like to continue? You still have a little time? No, there's no amendment in any.
No, no amendment in any.
We're still on opening on the bill. You still had the floor. You still have a few more minutes on the bill.
Yes, ma'am. At this time, I would like to add some co-sponsors. FMA, Madam Speaker.
Yes, please state the names.
I would like to add Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Telo Tidigui, Senator Tom Fisher, Senator Dwayne Siniklis, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Jocelyn Augustine, Senator Roy Canata, and Senator Frank Blas Jr. Wait, did you?
All right, on that amendment, clerks, do you have that? All right, on the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. That's the opening on the bill. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Duñez on the bill.
Madam Speaker, I'd certainly rise in support of Bill 6237. It's a great bill. And, you know, I think particularly timely as well. I mean, obviously, it was a bill that was introduced earlier, you know, just by its number and by date. And now we've had, you know, a catastrophic storm. And I can see a situation where, you know, it will open up a door for, you know, students to be able to avail of opportunities where they probably couldn't have before with financial constraints and the like. And it actually may end up easing the public school system. And so, other than what it really, the opportunity and the doors that it's opening, you know, it's even more timely at this point. And I think that, you know, this, this is going to be the future, I think, Madam Speaker. And if we really think about it, it is the Department of Education dollars. You know, we're trying to open opportunities and open doors. And like the author said, it really is now truly in this day and age, too, where learning is really evolving. Trying to keep our kids interested in school and starting to look at school as kind of extracting the most of their talent, kind of giving them, you know, a reason to want to stay in school because they're interested, they're, you know, they're stimulated every day by really kind of being able to, to, to address what their strengths are and things that keep them enthused. And so I just think that this really is the wave of the future. And I, and I know that we're always going to have a great Department of Education and do whatever we can to make sure that public compulsory education, you know, this body has done a lot to try to make sure, you know, that we can turn the ship around. We're going to hear a bill soon on trying to get Simon Sanchez off the ground. You know, we're going to, we're going to continue, I think, throughout this term to do everything that we can to, to help. And we've done that with money. We've done it with a lot of different, you know, tools in the toolbox that we've been talking about. But I think the real forward thinking on these opportunities is there's going to be more and more diversification. And I just think it's a good thing. I really do. You have, you have children nowadays, and we, we have got to do everything we can because that truly is their ticket to the future is in education. But it also is important, I think, now to recognize that one of the kind of revolutions in education that we've seen in some of our private schools that, and the charters, they're excited. And you look at I-Learn, look at how much that grew, Speaker. I know you were up there when, when they were opening and thankfully the contractor got that thing. A school that went from, you know, eight or nine teachers and 50-some students to now a huge campus of over 750 young people. And they were all so excited and you could just feel it in the air. And then that's, that's just a demonstration of growth and, and the way things can really become a lot more revolutionary, really, if you think about it, in education. And the teachers, I mean, over 50 teachers now, and you could just feel it in that school, that teaching and learning is really happening. So I think this is just another vehicle, a great vehicle. And I look forward to all the schools out there that are contemplating, you know, expanding now, you know, this opportunity. And I just look forward, Madam Speaker, to hearing the great stories coming out of young people, you know, just really enjoying their education and us making sure that we're doing everything that we said we're supposed to do, which is doing everything we can to make a promise for the future and have children who love to learn and stay away from the pitfalls of, you know, mediocrity, drugs, different things that can take them in a different direction. I think if we keep them excited about school, you know, we have a better shot at our future. So I really am glad to be a co-sponsor. I'm glad that, you know, the primary sponsor asked us, many of us, you know, and I look forward to the passage of this bill. I think it's going to do some really good work, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Tidigui, your record, thanks.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to my colleagues. Before I get started, I really would like to recognize the hard-working individual board at the charter school board. First and foremost, they go beyond what they're supposed to be doing. They, I see them working countless hours, you know, after having their full-time job, eight to five, still continuing on through the weekends. And I just want to give a shout out to them and say adonkulu sidoos masi for all your hard work. Now, this, we all know, this is going to be an opening of a door for more charter schools to come. I'm sure everyone has thought about that. But it's important that we also keep in mind that these charter schools and what they were intended for, a focused subject matter. We know that some schools, you know, science, learning, math, what we really need is one with culture, a charter school to push our culture, to teach our kids. Everyone knows I was a musician once upon a time, and, and I think that music is also an idea. I mean, probably would divulge my age when I say Fame. Remember that show Fame? Many of us do. But one of the most important things is how focused these children have become when they attend schools, but there's something that they look forward to. Now, one of the things that, that's really concerning me, of course, the previous speaker spoke about the, or actually, our minority leader spoke about how we are in a situation right now with this typhoon that has not only taken out some of the buildings at these schools. In fact, just today, I spoke with a principal, told me she had 28 Quanset huts, and 24 are down. If you ask me, colleagues, we are in an emergency. This is an emergency to put our children into a safe environment along with our parent, our teachers and our workers. This is a bill that needed to be done a couple weeks ago. You know, I commend the, the author of this legislature trying to find an alternative to the situation that has been dealt with us. Unfortunately, this typhoon and my colleagues, if you think this is going to be the last one for another 20 years, then, then you're living in La La Land. Because just like FEMA said, the waters in this area has warmed up tremendously, which means we're at the beginning of typhoon and we can expect more to come. We talked about the cost to about, you know, I've always working with the Oversight Chair of OFB and my good colleague from, from GGO. We talk about money because I'm very, you know, when it comes to that, yeah, I'm real tight when it comes to money. I want to make sure that we're spending it correctly and that our dollar goes further than what a dollar can buy. And this is one of those legislations that does that. We spend 11,000 plus per student in DOE. 11,000 plus. Charter schools, we appropriate only $7,500 for a student going into a charter school. That is a huge difference. And if we can put our children into a safer environment, because some of these charter schools have done, gone way beyond on making sure maintenance is taken care of, making sure inspections are done, making sure their children are safe, then this is what we need to do. So I ask my colleagues, please support this bill. I think we all understand the importance of getting our children back into this, into a safe environment. And I thank the, the author of the legislation, of the bill, to allow me to be a co-sponsor of this legislation. Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos Masi, Senator Tidigui. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Fisher on the bill? Anyone else on the bill? If not, we'll take a one-minute recess. If not, we'll take a one-minute recess.
Thank you. I just want to thank my colleagues for their support on this measure and also for the swift debate and discussion on this. And again, adonkulu situs massey. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I motion to place Bill 62-37COR as amended on the floor to the third reading file for voting later.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill 73, Vice Speaker.
Colleagues, we are now on Bill number 73-37LS, and I'm going to invite the Speaker, Speaker Therese Turlahey, to speak on the measure.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move Bill number 73-37LS as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. It's introduced by myself, Therese M. Turlahey, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Telatitekwe, Senator Joanne Brown. It's an act relative to further expanding access to opioid antagonists by establishing an emergency opioid access bystander program and requiring co-prescription of opioid antagonists by adding a new section 16115, 16116, 116117, and 16118 to Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, Chapter 6, Division 1. I'd like to speak on that motion.
Please proceed, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, as you know, in March of this year, we passed the Guam Opioid Overdose Prevention Act of 2023. It's now Public Law 37-2. And that combined with the efforts of the Opioid Advisory Recovery Council, the Office of the Attorney General, the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, the Guam Police Department, the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency, Homeland Security, and the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority EMS, Emergency Medical Services, and other stakeholders, we all worked together to ensure that antagonists would be legal, opioid antagonists would be legal on Guam. And that, that is the drug, that it counteracts the effects of opioid and counteracts especially the deadly effects of fentanyl on persons who are taking opioids and accidentally take one with fentanyl in it. This bill, well, that bill provided training to the first responders and to the peace officers and school personnel, volunteers and nonprofit organizations, so that they would have access to naloxone, which is an opioid antagonist, and they make sure that all of in our community who are interested could have access to that to save some lives. We also mandated it that it could be put into correctional facilities, which they now have, public educational facilities, as we saw in Hawaii, they have it readily available in the schools in Hawaii, and that we would provide immunity from civil and criminal liability and require Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center to publish information regarding these opioid antagonists on their website and do the training programs together with our law enforcement personnel, so that more in our community would know how to administer the naloxone and more in our community would, you know, be able to counteract the effects of fentanyl. This bill is to expand that law, but to include what's called a bystander program. We will identify, or we are charging the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center by this bill to identify locations throughout Guam to be able to distribute the emergency antagonist or naloxone around Guam, in public spaces, in other words, or private spaces. But they would work with these entities and ensure, you know, where this would be stored, who would be responsible for it, and what the guidelines would be to administer it to the public, so that it's more available throughout the community. This bill also requires that when a prescription is made for opioids, that there's also a prescription made for the antagonist or the naloxone alongside of the opioid prescription. Originally, the bill had a portion to require that insurance companies would cover the cost of the naloxone, but that has been removed from the bill in the version that's been amended by the committee. And that was due to the objections of the health insurance companies and their point pretty much was that we have naloxone available now on Guam due to our settlements in these opioid cases, and we have about 6,000 kits, or we will have about 6,000 kits available, and that they didn't want to increase the insurance costs by mandating that if we are going to have those available through the settlement. So for now, we've removed that portion and, but we do require that it is co-prescribed. On April 2023, we requested from the Attorney General information on the number of supplies of naloxone that would be distributed as a result of this settlement, when to expect that we would get the supply, and if those would be distributed to pharmacies. Because pharmacies would also like the ability to distribute those naloxone upon consultation with patients. And as you know, since we began work on that other bill, naloxone has now become legal over the counter. So you don't, I mean, yeah, you don't even need a prescription. So the pharmacies want to be able, if we have product for them to distribute, to distribute that as well. So we did consult with the Attorney General's opioid team, and their response was that the settlement product, the states can elect to accept either an allocated share of settlement product, the naloxone sprays, or a cash conversion payment. And the product is valued at $1.2 billion in wholesale acquisition cost with a cash conversion value of $240 million. The settlement product is available over a 10-year period, and each state elects whether to take settlement product or annual cash conversion payments. They may change their election between settlement product and cash every two years. So they extrapolated that Guam will receive 5,605 naloxone spray kits over the 10-year period if they chose products. We also added a provision in the bill that allows the Opioid Recovery Advisory Council, that's section 16117, to distribute opioid antagonists to pharmacies and to emergency access locations established under the bystander program. In other words, public health establishes the bystander program, they can stock it with their own supplies, or we are also allowing the Opioid Advisory Council to put their products into those locations as well. Some of these will be government of Guam locations, that's why we want to authorize it by law, that they will carry these products, these drugs in their store, in their facilities. All right, I think that pretty much describes what we're trying to do with the bill. I also do have an amendment on the bill that I'd like to present right now. And that is, it's been passed out, is to add a new 16119, fentanyl testing strips. Notwithstanding any other law, the distribution or possession of a narcotic drug testing product that is used solely to determine whether a controlled substance contains fentanyl shall be lawful on Guam and may be distributed through the bystander program or wherever opioid antagonists are distributed. So this is to add on to our distribution of antagonists. We're also going to allow, make legal, and authorize full distribution of fentanyl testing kits. And again, I hope it's very obvious to everyone, it's to save lives. And to stop before we get into a real crisis avalanche of fentanyl throughout Guam, that we try to combat it right now, as we found out during earlier proceedings, that fentanyl is on Guam. It's made its way, and so if we follow the trends, we can only expect more. So hopefully, this, the testing, you can test your opioids, in other words, to see if fentanyl is in there before you take it. All right? Okay, so with that, I would humbly ask my colleagues to please support this bill. Situs Massey, Madam Speaker.
One, Vice Speaker Turlahey, anyone else on the main motion? Oh, I do apologize. On the amendment, on the TMT amendment, on page 1, line 12, does anyone wish to speak on the amendment? To speak on the amendment, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Yeah, line 12, page 4. No objections? Motion carries. Anyone? Speaker Turlahey, you still have the floor on the main motion? Anyone wishing to speak on the main motion? Senator Fisher, I will recognize you on the main motion. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. I have a contract of insurance with a local carrier, and the contract is this, they agree to provide health insurance so long as I agree to pay them. And if I pay them, they have agreed to provide health insurance under certain terms. It's not carte blanche. There are certain terms to it. There are deductibles involved, there are limitations on certain coverage, et cetera. So I would like to begin by addressing Section 16116, insurance coverage in general, all Medicaid programs and Medicare programs, et cetera. Where does this body derive the authority to prescribe what is stated and what isn't? Where does this body derive the authority to prescribe what is stated and what is not stated in a federal law? Medicare has certain programs designed federally and approved by Congress. Medicare as well. I was not, prior to this afternoon's session, it never occurred to me that this body could come in and modify federal laws. I had always, of course, thought the supremacy clause controlled this sort of issue. That is one comment, but if I may follow up, ma'am, with a question for this principal sponsor.
You may proceed with the question.
Thank you. Madam Vice Speaker, does the proponent of this bill believe that this section, particularly 16116, violates the contracts clause of the Constitution and impairs a contract? That is of great concern to me because my carrier may decide they don't want to obey this law and may terminate my contract of insurance. I wonder if she believes, and if so, why this does not impair contract?
I will ask Senator Fisher. Speaker Terlaii, would you like to yield to that inquiry?
Sure, I'll yield to that inquiry. First of all, this provision is taken from the model legislation that is used across the nation. Secondly, I don't believe that it violates their contracts because it says they will not, going forward, discriminate against people who are taking fentanyl, and none of the insurance companies objected to that provision in the bill.
I thought we were on the main motion.
Sir, you asked a question. She is answering it, and as soon as she's done, I will ask you if it suffices. Speaker Terlaii, you were still answering the question.
The senator lawyer pointed out section 16116, the only section in the bill that talks about insurance coverage, right? So I'm responding, talking about section 116 was derived from the model legislation that's been adopted in different states across the nation, the opioid overdose prevention legislation, and this particular clause that deals with insurance companies only prohibits them from discriminating against, from providing life insurance to any individual who has an emergency opioid antagonist prescription, meaning if your doctor gives you an opioid and also gives you a prescription for opioid antagonist, the insurance companies cannot say, oh, you're getting opioid antagonist prescription, we're not going to cover you. Yes, I believe you can find examples of restrictions on insurance companies doing business on Guam, in Guam statutes, and definitely because this becomes effective, you know, after the effective date.
Time, recess?
It should, you know, apply going forward. So, no, I do not believe it violates any constitutional provision. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Fisher, I yield the floor back to you.
Yes, 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 ma'am, and I would like to continue, but could I ask for a short recess?
I will give you that moment's recess. You mean, a 17 LS to Guam is back from recess. Senator Fisher, you had the floor.
Thank you for that brief recess, Madam Vice Speaker. I'm not going to pursue this line of questioning right now, so thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Anyone else on the main? Senator Frank Blass, Minority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, in the interest of disclosure, there are no conflicts of interest that exist in my presentation as a licensed life insurance agent or broker.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker, along the lines of, you know, the concern brought out by the good gentleman from EPAN, particularly with section 16116 of the bill, prohibition of discrimination by life insurance companies, and more specifically, that it basically says that providing life insurance as authors do the business within Guam shall not otherwise discriminate in the offering of issuance, cancellation, amount of coverage, premium, or any other condition of insurance policy issued by the company based solely upon the fact that an individual has had or a prescription for an emergency opioid antagonist or purchased or otherwise possessed an emergency opioid antagonist. First off, Madam Chair, I can understand that this bill was probably drafted prior to the determination, first off, that opioid antagonists are now legal and over the counter. Secondly, is that on Guam, insurance, for the most part, insurance companies that exist on Guam are not necessarily carriers, more specifically in the area of life insurance, but basically general agents, agents and producers. We do not have any authority to be able to rewrite any of the, rewrite any of the applications, and I don't know how this can be, for the most part, enforceable, or is this, in fact, this section necessary in that opioid antagonist and what it is concerned about is legal, just like et cetera, or bear aspirin? And so I caution in that, while I understand what we want to achieve, I think it's been achieved already because it's legal. And if you're taking a prescription on the basis of it being legal, you know, occasion point, I think it was known that, you know, the early part of last year, I had underwent major surgery that required my physician to provide to me an opioid-based pain reliever. Guess what? Didn't lose insurance, okay? Because it's legal. So there was no fear of that. Now, if you were abusing it, different story. That falls under a separate category, but this is not, this is taking it for purely legal, authorized purposes, but is there a necessity for this? And granted, in speaking with the author of the legislation, this was drafted from model legislation taken elsewhere, and I can probably very safely surmise that this was model legislation that was drafted prior to the legalization of the antagonist, and in areas where they do have the ability to be able to dictate the language in insurance applications. But going back to, again, the very purposes of life insurance companies, it struck me there because I was looking at this and I said, in all my application and my experience with life insurance and the application process, this would not have been issued because it's legal. So I just bring that as a point of concern. You know, there's really no harm in it being in here, but is it necessary for it to be here, is my question. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Very welcome, Minority Leader. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Speaker Terlaii, you may close on the main motion.
Thank you very much, and I'd just like to address the previous speaker's concern to make sure that, hopefully, I can allay them. Again, this provision that we're talking about, the one provision in the bill that's being referred to, 16117, that, I'm sorry, 16116, that refers to life insurance companies, this is to prevent discrimination, that's all, not to allow or not allow coverage, but to prevent discrimination solely on the base of a person is, has purchased or has a prescription for an opioid antagonist. In other words, you can discriminate as a life insurance company, probably because a person's on alcohol, which is legal, and you can probably discriminate because they are on opioids, but this is just saying, no discrimination because they are on antagonists as well, if they are on opioids, solely for the antagonist. And the purpose of why it's necessary is because why the bill is necessary, because we could sit back and let the market take its course and let the drug use take its course, but we're trying to be proactive. We're trying to get in there and say straight out in the bat, we want to promote opioid antagonists, even though it might imply that people are taking opioids or that they might end up taking opioids with fentanyl with or without the intention to, you know, do illicit drugs or not, or really they're just trying to follow their prescription, without determining intention, motivation, whether they're guilty, not guilty, criminal or not, nothing. The whole point of the two bills and the changes in these laws is that we want fentanyl to be out there without any bias on a person who gets, sorry, we want naloxone or an opioid antagonist of other brands to get them without any stigma attached, and in regards to life insurance, without any discrimination solely based on that. And so I do not, it's necessary to promote the anti-stigmatization of using naloxone or being prescribed naloxone or carrying naloxone. That's all. We want everybody to carry it. They might need it for themselves, or they might need to save someone else's life who they are with, and that's why we want to put this into statute, make it very obvious that Guam, along with the other states like New York, is going to say, just no discrimination in that, just solely, just for that reason alone. A combination of reasons, perhaps, but for that reason alone, no. And so again, I ask my colleagues that, yes, the product is legal, but for us to distribute it as a government the way we want to and to have laypersons have access to our product that we are getting in the settlement and to have government agencies holding this in their agency and distributing it, we want to make all of that legal and just make sure it's very clear. No stigma, easy access, save lives. So again, I thank all my colleagues for their support on this bill and the prior bills and our movement towards getting this out in the community and preventing overdose of, based on opioids. Sisus Masim.
On the motion, Speaker Terlaii, to the voting file, please.
So I'd like to reiterate my motion to place this bill 73-37 LS as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture and further amended on the floor to the third reading.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Colleagues, we are now on bill number 82-37 LS, Senator Duane Siniklas. On the main bill.
Hi, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill comes to me from our veterans organization.
Senator, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Could you please take the bill number, where it's come from, as amended, name the sponsors, read the bill?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And then go to the third reading, yes?
Sorry, I just want to jump on it and let's vote on it already.
Most definitely.
Sorry, excuse me. All right. All right. So this, excuse me, I don't have my glasses on, but bear with me for one moment. So the bill is bill number 82-37LS, as amended by the Committee on Environment Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning, introduced by myself, Dwayne T. D. Sanicholas, and sponsored by Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Christopher M. Duñez, William A. Parkinson, Jesse A. Luhon, Joe S. Augustine, Roy A. B. Canata, and act to amend subsection 7120.2 and subsection 7120.5, 7160 and 7161 of Chapter 7, Title 16, Guam Code annotated, relative to allowing Republic of Korea veterans and distinguished flying cross recipients to qualify for Guam Veterans License Plates, and to allow more documents to be used for veterans' qualifications.
To the third reading, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm just going to make that correction, Senator, that it's subsections 7160 CE and subsection 7161F.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Please proceed.
Yes. So what do I do now?
Speak on the bill, Senator.
Okay. All right. I'm still learning the process. Thank you, Madam Speaker. So the bill comes to me from some veterans organizations out there, and some concerned veterans. This bill actually was, I think, tried to make it several times within the past decade. And they were telling me that when they first introduced this legislation a couple of years ago, that there were 20 Korean War, Korean veterans of the Republic of Korea who fought alongside during the Vietnam War, and were not U.S. citizens, and they were friendly forces, and they fought alongside our service members in Vietnam, then eventually later emigrated to Guam. There was about 20 of them when they first introduced this several years back, and now there's only four of them. So I took this measure upon myself to introduce it, to honor the sacrifice that these men have done, fighting alongside our own regular military. I personally have experience as an infantryman, working alongside friendly forces who have fought alongside and with us, and paid the ultimate sacrifice. None of them ever were able to immigrate to the States, and so I, this is a very particularly interesting measure for me because I know of the sacrifice of our friendly forces. And so I would really appreciate it if my colleagues would help support this measure to allow our Korean servicemembers, our military servicemembers who served under the Korean flag, and now are U.S. citizens, to be able to apply and receive Veterans License Plates. Also during the public hearing, there was a recommendation to remove the restrictions on two Veterans License Plates. I actually don't see the amendment here, but I would also really want to allow for veterans to have unlimited license plates. And I asked my colleagues to support the measure. Thank you, ma'am.
You're very welcome, Senator Sanicholas. On the main motion, does anyone wish to speak? Senator Fisher, I recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. I'd like to congratulate the author of this bill. As a veteran myself, I understand somewhat the importance, and perhaps I wasn't honored and I did not receive the honor of actually fighting in combat for my country, but I served, and I commend the author of this bill. I thank him for this bill. And as a member of the veterans' community, I think that I'd probably speak for the entire community when I thank him for this bill. One thing, a C story, which may be relevant or not, when a few years ago, when I was working representing senior citizens, I actually met an individual who was a Philippine scout who fought with the resistance in the Philippines, and actually met General Douglas MacArthur. He fought valiantly for America in the Philippines, and, you know, I don't think there are too many Philippine scouts left anymore, but I was just bringing that up to just, there are so many communities out there who have helped the United States, and they are worthy of honor, and they are worthy of this act, and I support it 100%. Thank you very much for this bill.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, anyone else like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Canata, then Senator Brown, then Senator Barnett.
I rise in support of my colleague Senator Sanicholas, the good Senator of Hoggett. Obviously, a lot of our population is based off of military presence, and we have a numerous amount of individuals in our local capacity that serve in the military. I don't think anyone in our body here has, no one in our family serving in the armed forces. I myself have two brothers who have served in the Air Force, my father served in the Air Force, my grandfather's have served in the military, so it's obviously, you know, something in the generational scale. So I rise in support of this legislation, and I wish we did this earlier, and regardless of whatever sacrifices each member has made, as long as, as well as Senator Fisher, whether or not it's been in combat field or not, we commend all the military members out there who sacrificed and all their families as well for their continuous support and all the efforts. Thank you again, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Canata. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly support the bill. I just wanted to note, the creation of the Veterans License Plate, actually, I was a main sponsor quite a number of years ago with the late Senator Tony Blas. Many of our U.S. states recognize their veterans in their states, and there's one thing that, prior to that, considering as many members, as was made reference by the previous speaker, that we have on Guam, we did not have Veterans License Plates to recognize those that have served in the U.S. Armed Forces. And so, we're very fortunate, gosh, this is almost 20 years ago, that we introduced this legislation, it passed to recognize our veterans. Certainly in my case, my father is a combat veteran, and that was one of the things we noticed. We traveled to quite many of the states in the U.S. mainland, going cross-country, and noticing the different states recognizing their veterans, and we said, wow, this isn't the case on Guam. So he goes, well, there's something for you to do, Joanne. And so I'm very proud that we were able to put this in place, to recognize all those that serve, and certainly appreciate the efforts of Senator Sanicholas in introducing it, to recognize those, because certainly in these countries, in the case of Korea, those that fought, you know, arm-in-arm and side-by-side, it's important to also recognize them, especially at this time and age in their life, to be able to do that. And I think we need to be respectful of this process for those that have served, because some have served harder than others, some have sacrificed ultimately, and I've experienced both in my family. So I think it's important we continue to recognize and respect our veterans that we have, and I'm very proud. I mean, we still maintain the vehicles that we had when my father was alive, we still have his Veterans Plates, and they will certainly remain until the time my mom makes the decision we're going to replace the cars. But every time I see it, it's a wonderful reminder to me of the service my dad and many others contributed, and, you know, he was lucky to come home. And I think we appreciate all those that have been in combat that are able to come home, because we have some that don't. And I had a family member who was very close to me who didn't come home. So again, thank you to our efforts of Senator Sanicholas, and I hope you will include me as a co-sponsor in this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too rise in support of this bill from the good Senator from Hoggett Town. It's unfortunate that, like the author had said, that we didn't pass something like this in previous legislatures, because the number of people that would be able to avail of this license plate has dwindled down to, for now, four people, he said. And just to clarify, and I spoke with him before he put the bill on the floor, and these are Korean military veterans who fought alongside United States Armed Forces, which is something I can relate to, because my late grandfather, defunto Jose Santos Tenorio, was a member of the Guam Combat Patrol. And I always think about that all the time, but most especially during this time of year, as we just celebrated War Survivors' Remembrance Day. And I used to love it when my grandmother didn't talk about the war at all, but my grandfather told us a lot of stories about his time in the Guam Combat Patrol. And if you're not familiar with the Guam Combat Patrol, it was basically an insular guard made up of young Chamorro men who assisted the United States Armed Forces that were here, because a lot of the U.S. military, you know, weren't familiar with Harlem Tano, and so in many cases, the insular guard served as guides, and not just that, they were, they had guns, and, you know, from the stories my grandfather told me, they were a very big part, especially after the Americans came back. The insular guard was largely responsible for patrolling the jungles and looking for any remaining Japanese soldiers. You know, they missed a couple, right, I'm sure, Yacoi? And so I definitely support this measure, and ask my colleagues to also support it as well. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Sido Smasi, Madam Speaker. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this measure, and I thank the good author from Hoggett for literally putting this legislation out. I know that the previous speaker talked about the Guam Insular Guard, and I don't know if you knew that, that was led by a general, but everybody in Guam knew him as Colonel Juan Munia, and Fort Juan Munia was named after him. So in the efforts of continuing to recognize those who truly need the recognition, and sometimes a little can go a very long way, and in this effort, this is one of those legislations that can literally take something and reach out for those who truly, that need that recognition, or have not gotten that recognition in the past. When you talk about this legislation, maybe for very little, but the bigger picture is knowing that the recognition is there for all those who took the time to serve our island nation. So thank you, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this, and I thank the good author for giving me the opportunity to be a part of his sponsorship. Sido Smasi.
Sido Smasi, Vice Speaker. Senator San Augustine, you're recognized, and then Senator Duñez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I'm also a co-sponsor of the bill, so I am in full support of it. But I'd like to also mention that I am working with the author of this bill, that we're going to come up with a design of the veterans' plate, to change it a little bit. And the reason for that is because you'll find that on every plate for the different awards they receive, Bronze Stars, they have the little medal on the left of the plate. And that's something that we found that in other states, the plate is very distinguished of exactly what they serve. And it even includes for the purpose of the family members to be able to participate. So there's many things that are still being evaluated to determine it, but, you know, Department of Revenue and Tax, years back, I worked with them so we can get the Bronze Stars on the plate, and that worked perfectly. And I know, I know the veterans listening tonight are probably going to says, well, let's not forget Afghanistan War, let's not forget all the different wars, but we need to come to terms of exactly what the proper or the appropriate design will be, so that every veteran can be recognized for all the years of service they perform. And I thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator San Augustine. Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sido Smasi, Madam Speaker. When I got the notice to, with the offer to co-sponsor this motion, I was honored, and glad to be a co-sponsor. You know, Madam Speaker, I guess the moment that I enjoyed the most was the public hearing, and one of the very distinguished gentlemen that came before us to testify in favor. It's kind of interesting, a lot of us, whatever we do in our life, I think we all are, try to be proud of accomplishments and things that we do, but it's always so distinguishing to, you know, see the demeanor of veterans, and particularly those who served in conflict. Just the honor and the dignity that they bring to really the sacrifice of service in the armed forces, and particularly those who, you know, would join alongside in an effort, you know, to combat an enemy for freedom. And so I just think that anything we can ever do to honor individuals who just give of such distinguished service is really duty-bound. And I'm glad to be a co-sponsor, and I appreciate the author for introducing this legislation, and look forward to its passage, and, you know, even if it's just going to honor a few, I'm sure those few, you know, will be happy to finally receive that dignity. You know, Madam Speaker, whenever I drive around, I don't, I just, whenever I see a veteran plate, I just, I feel good, you know, I'm glad that they have that distinguished opportunity to have that marking on a vehicle that really marks distinguished service and honor. And so I'm glad Senator Brown brought back the history of even just the inception of this opportunity, and here we are now, ensuring to add this honor to another distinguished group. And so, very honored to be a part of this bill and look forward to voting for it. Sido Smasi, Madam Speaker.
Sido Smasi, Senator. Senator Tait, you're recognized.
Sido Smasi, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I have to say that one thing I've known about Senator Sanicholas is that, you know, he really doesn't like to leave any man behind, and this particular bill does just that. He ensures that people who have forgotten are remembered, and he goes beyond to ensure that that happens. And just for the listening audience, I wanted to read just a small insert on why this is so important and moving forward, especially in other states. And it is in the legislation that our good author incorporated, but it says, "Illesse Tu en Guano also finds that states like California, New York, Pennsylvania, Arkansas, as well as our nation's Congress have taken steps to address inclusions of ROK veterans, which is the Korean veterans. Recently, to the U.S. House of Representatives passed as a resolution to amend fiscal year 2022 National Defense Authorization Act, which recognizes the contributions of Korean and Korean-American veterans, and introduced H.R. 366, Korean-Americans Valor Act, which if passed would grant health care and medical benefits to those veterans. States like California, Pennsylvania also provided veterans' license plates to Korean veterans, and states like Arkansas, New York have unique, unique veterans' license plate that are properly denoted their status. And it's only fair that we do the same, to recognize these individuals who fought for the freedom that we all enjoy today. And whether it's 50 of these veterans, or even one, just one, that is enough who put their lives at stake for us, again, for our freedom. So I want to commend the good author of this legislation and ask that he So I want to commend the good author of this legislation and ask that he include me as a co-sponsor on this legislation. And let's all enjoy the freedoms that we have today because of this. Sido Smasi, Madam Speaker.
Sido Smasi. Anyone else would like to be recognized? Oh, Senator Lohan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank the great author who's actually really, truly the legislator Santa. And I want to thank him actually for asking me to be a co-sponsor as well. And when I read the proposed bill, I was forwarded to my office, I had to think back about, you know, any reference to the Korean War and absolutely my dad's brother, Francisco Marian, fought in the Korean War and was wounded in the Korean War. He was the former chairman of the parole board for a long time, as a matter of fact. He's no longer with us. But thinking back and when I, when I read the bill, I said, you know, man, I wonder if he fought alongside these men. And he probably did, he probably did. You know, a veteran, whether, whether you're the US military or whatever country military and fighting alongside our men and women in theater, is still a veteran, is a veteran. And with that, I want to thank again the good author, the author, because you truly are now a Santa to, to the Korean vets that fought alongside our men. So I want to thank him for that. And again, we know, we know Santa's heart, it's very big. And again, this is, it's making things right and doing things right and it's the right thing to do. With that, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Lohan. On the bill, Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
I stand in full support of this bill. I once spoke with a veteran and as I was assisting this veteran with the VA process, he had run into a snag where they couldn't find his military records. And he said something to me that I'll never forget. He said, "It's really spooky that your whole history could just disappear in a blink of an eye like that." And so I think this bill is important for letting the veterans of that war and all wars have the dignity to have their contribution remembered and acknowledged from here and for the rest of their life from a thankful nation. And with that, I ask my colleagues to support this measure and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you Senator Parkinson. On the bill, anyone else on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill. Senator San Nicholas.
Ma'am, I have an amendment.
All right, we can take care of that first.
Yes, so, as I remember the public hearing, this was actually mentioned, but it wasn't added to the, to the, to the bill, so I wanted to add it on. It's to amend Section 2, subsection 7120.2, parentheses F, of bill, of the bill to read, issuance, a veteran's license plate shall be issued only to registered owners or leasing of the vehicle on which they are to be displayed. Registration for a veteran's license plate shall be unlimited per veteran. Reverend Tax spoke on the, on this amendment and they said that it was good to go.
On the amendment, would anyone like to speak on the amendment? Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I would like to ask the author, because when we actually created the law that created the Veterans License Plate, we actually had many veterans organizations actually come forth to even address the design at the time of how they wanted the Veterans License Plate to be designed and also the number of veterans license plates that they wanted to have authorized. I understand, you know, some people have more than one car or two cars, but at the other end, I'm kind of concerned about the degree of unlimited. I just don't want to delude, you know, the importance and significance of these plates and certainly, I mean, you have veterans that, as I mentioned, have more than one car. I have more than one car. But I just want to make sure this is not something that gets abused because again, it's a very important honor, it's something that should be respected. And I'm just trying to understand what do we mean by unlimited versus, you know, what we would think would be a reasonable number that most people would have of vehicles.
Yes ma'am, so the veterans, the veterans employee who spoke, she, during the testimony, the public hearing, she said that she got word from other veterans that they, they actually, you know, if it's okay, if they could have unlimited license plates. That's, that's why I brought it up. And I do understand your concern and I also want to protect the sanctity of it, but if the amendment would be allowed, it'd be a great thing as well.
If I could ask again, Madam Chair of the sponsor, I mean, would there be another reasonable number versus unlimited that we could find a common ground on? Because I, I just have a little reservation. Again, I did not set in my own idea, in my own mind, that I wanted only two veterans license plates. That was something that veterans organizations had relayed, that they, they wanted to limit it to two and I don't have a problem increasing it. But again, when we go from that to the extreme of unlimited, I kind of have a little reservation about that.
Ma'am, would four be a good compromise?
I'd be open to four. That's a lot of cars to pay insurance on, but I'd be open to four if the body doesn't object. I just, I just think there needs to be a reasonable number so that again, we don't go to the extreme and we don't have abuse. Because you know, the other sad reality, I don't think it will happen here, but you know, sometimes there are those that want to abuse the privilege, some that have never even earned the privilege that will brag that, oh, I did this, I did that, I earned this, I earned that and they didn't. And, and you know, that doesn't show any respect to those that actually did serve and sacrifice. So if the author would not mind amending this from two to four, I would be very supportive of that.
Thank you Senator Brown. Anyone else on the bill? Or on the amendment, sorry. On the amendment? Senator Son Augustine, on the amendment?
I stand in support of the amendment. The amendment to the amendment, the unlimited to four?
There's no amendment to the amendment.
Okay, I think the author is going to be making the amendment. He may ask for recess to make the amendment.
Yes ma'am, can we make an amendment, a recess?
We don't need a recess, we'll just...
Change it to four.
When you, we come back to you. Are you done speaking on the amendment, Senator Son Augustine?
Yes, well, the only thing I'm concerned about really is, is exactly what the previous author brought up, the sanctity of the license plate. I think one of the things we need to make sure is known and is known to the public is that when you register a vehicle with a veteran's plate, it needs to be recovered by the Department of Revenue and Taxation when that vehicle is sold. Because technically right now, if you have a license, a veteran's plate and you sell the car, the plate basically stays with the plate, with the car unless it's retrieved. So we, I don't know how we want to word it onto this bill, but it's got to be recovered. And, and only because otherwise you're going to have people driving around with a used vehicle with a veteran's plate. That's where the abuse comes in, where I'm a veteran, no you're not. Because currently on some of the business establishments and some of the government into these buildings, there's a, there's a sign saying veterans only. So we want to make sure if you've got a veteran's plate, you can park, but if you're not a veteran, you shouldn't be parking there. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you Senator Son Augustine. Anyone else on the amendment? On the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment and further amend it if he wants.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Thank you Senator Brown for, for your input. And yes ma'am, I would like to amend it to, to, shall be limited to four vehicles. It's a wonderful compromise.
All right, is there any objection to having this amendment done verbally instead of in writing? Seeing none, we will proceed. So the amendment is to change the word unlimited to read limited to four vehicles per veteran. On that amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak? Is there, the sponsor may close on that amendment?
Yes. Yes ma'am.
Or if not?
Yes, yes, okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker, yes. So the, thank you to Senator Brown again for, for keeping us grounded here. I really do enjoy having her speak and listen to her very, very good wisdom, sometimes she imparts on us here. But yes ma'am, thank you and this is, this is the, this is the amendment for per veteran. Thank you.
Thank you. So on that amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, amendment passes. So we are now on you for closing on the bill. Senator San Nicholas.
Yes ma'am. I would like to add a co-sponsors to the bill, please.
I'm sorry, that was on the... All right, that was on the amendment to the amendment and now we're just going to re-verify again that the amendment, as it now reads, registration for a veteran license plate shall be limited to four vehicles per veteran. On that amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. You may close on the bill, Senator San Nicholas.
Ma'am, can I add a co-sponsors, please?
Yes, that can be a motion made right now.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add Senator Tytegri, Senator Fisher, Senator Brown and Senator, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes and everybody else. Anybody else who would like to be in it?
All right. The Vice Speaker is already the second, first co-sponsor and...
Yes, I'd like to add everybody if that's okay.
All right, so we're going to add Senator Tytegri, Fisher, Brown and then everyone else. Is that correct? Is that the motion?
Yes ma'am.
All right. On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Any other closing remarks on the bill? Senator San Nicholas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam. So I get to speak on the bill? Close it? Yes ma'am. I actually served in a theater war and one, you know, we actually played basketball with some of these, these guys and then one day, you know, they go out of the wire and you hear the mortars and you hear all the traffic in the radio and they never came back. So I personally know the sacrifice of people who fight alongside us. And this is a very, very wonderful bill, a small measure of recognition for those who served in previous wars alongside our service members. So I really like to thank all the co-sponsors and my colleagues who spoke on the measure. So Madam Speaker, I move to place bill 82-37 amended, substituted, read on the third, for the third reading. Am I, am I doing this right?
Yes, you are.
Voting fine.
All right, so on that motion to place bill 82-37 COR, as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement and Statistics, Research and Planning and further amended on the floor, onto the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you ma'am.
We're now on bill number 94-37 COR. Senator Canata, you are recognized. Okay, we'll take a two-minute recess. We're back from recess. Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to recess until tomorrow at 10:00.
Motion to recess until 10:00 AM tomorrow, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we are recessed until 10:00 AM tomorrow. Sido Smasi, colleagues.